Good call, night's meeting to order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Finner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
High certification began by Pastor Rusty Westfield of the First Christian Church. Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us for this night. Thank you for these who lead our city. God, what a privilege it is to pastor a church in a town that supports our churches and our businesses. And Lord, just this town in general, we just give you praise and honor for that. I pray for this meeting, I pray for wisdom, I pray for insight. God, that you will guide, you will bless, and you will guard. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start tonight with a special order of business, and this will be police department promotions. We have two officers that are being promoted to the master police officer rank. And I'm going to go over what the master police officer is. It's a position between a police officer and police sergeant. Officer eligible to test for a master police officer after four years of law enforcement experience. And again, as we have tonight, we have two officers that are moving to the master police officer. First one is Officer Matt Trelo. Officer Trelo began his law enforcement career with Sedgwick County Sheriff's Department Detention Bureau in 2012. He came to the Hayesville Police Department last year. Has been through many training over the last few years, including crisis intervention, vehicle stop spikes, and mostly DARE and School Resource Officer certifications. Is currently assigned as a School Resource Officer at Campus High School and is teaching DARE in our elementary schools. He's originally from Saint Louis area. Outside of work, he enjoys hunting, spending time with his family. His wife has been married for seven years, they have three children, ages thirteen, four, and two. Our second officer is Holly Cash. Officer Cash began her law enforcement career with the Wichita Police Department in 2001, where she worked until Tuesday night, 2008. She left law enforcement for nine years to sell real estate and became a licensed broker, which she still maintains. She came to Hayesville Police Department last year. Her goals include to become a detective and eventually become a sergeant. She is currently assigned to patrol section as a field training officer, train new officers coming into the department. Outside of work, she has two sons and one grandbaby who turned two years old yesterday. Her hobbies include working out and bike riding. She also enjoys going camping with her family at Cow Lake. Officer Cash. No speeches?
No, no speeches tonight, sir.
Okay. Then move to item B, and the proclamation designating October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Just so you know, red ribbon, ribbon. Red Ribbon Week proclamation is. A, where communities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with illicit drugs and use of those or trafficking them. So the Red Ribbon has been actually, and established in Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement of drug prevention and reduction efforts. So whereas October 23rd through 31st is designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. So as, therefore, I resolve to be October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week. Get the orders out there.
Good job.
Yeah, I did want to also mention that Hayesville Healthy Habits also goes around and they put, you'll see red ribbons around some trees and some other poles in town that's establishing this. But I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the proclamation designating October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week. But you'll be glad to know that all the schools have trouble with that announcement all week long. So you're not alone.
Have a motion second to designate October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Then move on, presentation approval of minutes, A, minutes of October 9, 2018. Mr. Kessler?
I think motion we approve the minutes of October 9th, 2018.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes, October 9, 2018. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Epstein.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
On our agenda is the citizens of Beards, a Sedgwick County Fire Department. I don't see them anywhere, and we don't have a report that I know of either one. So if they do show, we'll cover them. Item two, approved and licensed bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions. A, an ordinance amending the sign code of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Mr. Kessler?
I like the way this ordinance is written, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the new sign code ordinance of the city of Hayesville. Second.
Motion second to approve the amendment of the sign code. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Move then to item B, is resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2018 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application. We would need a motion to approve that resolution.
This is the one for the streets up there?
Yes, this is. That fields.
I was just thinking, I don't know if they're, we got this out of their current packet of materials, but I can't remember if it's a 2019 program. So if you could just make the motion to approve it, that it's for whichever program the application is due for on November 1st. Because it may be the 2019 program, we pulled this out of their current materials, but it may be the 2019 program.
Right, we're just approving to do it, not to any certain year at this point.
Well, they want it for the application period to be.
Which is 2019, you think?
Pretty sure.
2018 slash 2019.
They did a 2019 award for the 2019 program.
Okay.
I just noticed that now.
You have a motion in a second, Mr. Crum? Did you, your light was on for something, did we have a motion?
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
And then Will confused me when I was.
Sorry.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
For 2019?
I didn't want to say a year, that's why I left it out in there.
Can I have a second? We did.
I did.
Okay. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Then item C is a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the road or street system to be financed with the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Any one?
I'd make a motion, we approve that resolution.
Second. Motion second to approve the resolution for the funds for the system. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Move to item four, notifications, A, government body announcements. I'm ready, Ms. Pardon?
I'd just like to thank the community of Hayesville for their support this weekend for the Fall Festival. I believe it was a rousing success, and we hope you had fun and be back next year. And thank you, all of your people.
As I say, I think we on the other end, obviously, are thanking them for putting it on.
Lot of work.
For Public Works and Canada and all of her volunteers, it doesn't get done without a lot of people.
Without Public Works, we wouldn't be set up. So thank you, Tony, for your group. They haven't got pump and bread made yet, so maybe next week. And Chief, for you and your officers, all you do all weekend, thank you.
Mr. Crum?
Yeah, just went and stuff going on at the library. Still do story times Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:30 in the morning. The next people may handle be Saturday the 27th at 10:30, and that usually lasts until about 2:00. Next Monday evening, the 29th, the community room will be movie night, called A Quiet Place is gonna be the name of the movie. And the week after that, on Monday, November 5th, they'll be doing, the new Tomb Raider movie will be the movie. And the next Lego club will be on November 8th. And then as far as the school district goes, the football, campus's football team is seeded, I think they're seeded seventh in the district, and they'll be hosting Wichita South at Colt Stadium Friday evening. The soccer team is seeded sixth in their district, and they will be hosting Wichita North tomorrow evening at 6:00 at Colt Stadium. I know we had a few cross-country athletes that qualified for state. And volleyball went in seeded ninth in their district, and they, so technically, they were the underdog in their first match, and they won, but then they did lose to the top seeded team in the state, which I believe is Lawrence. But that's kind of what's going on at the library and school district.
I guess. I don't have any announcements for seniors here at this point, I guess it's ending over. So if you want to know, go to the senior center. Item B is a letter from KDHE regarding a vapor intrusion assessment they're going to be doing. And then item C is a thank you letter from Joe Holb and People Live on Mimosa for the work that was done on Mimosa. Item five, old business, we have nothing. Item six of the business, A, consideration establishment of date for public hearing and approval of statement of final costs, assessment rolls, and notice of public hearing. And this is on the Country Lakes Edition. Your own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Chauvin, George K. Baumann Company, financial advisor to the city. The Country Lakes Edition and the Country Lakes Second Edition, infrastructure improvements, including water supply line, water distribution line, sanitary sewer, and paving and drainage projects are complete, and final costs have been submitted to our office. Back in January, the city sold and issued $1,175,000 in temporary notes to provide temporary finance for these improvements. We've used the final project costs and any unused temporary note proceeds to size a general obligation bond issue for the permanent financing, and we're estimating that to be $840,000. Based on total costs of each project, the water supply line, the city's portion was 21% of that cost, which equals $15,511.87. The improvement districts portion is the remaining 79%, and that's $58,354.19. That'll be spread over 36 lots, and that's $1,620.95 per lot. The water distribution line, the improvement portions, the city has zero percentage, and the improvement portion's 100%, $77,856.12, spread over 36 lots, is $2,162.67 per lot. The sanitary sewer improvement district is 100%, it's $320,48.98, and that's spread over 56 lots, and that's $5,715.16 per lot. And paving and drainage, the improvement portion is 100%, and that's $368,228.84. Spread over 36 lots is $10,228.58 per lot. The notice of public hearing and the statement of costs to be assessed will be mailed to all property owners on November 1st. The property owners will have until December 5th of this year to prepay any or all the assessments. We will use all prepaid assessments as a source to the bond issue and issue fewer bonds at that time. Any property owners who do not pay their assessment will repay with 20 installments with interest. The action item for consideration tonight will approve the statement of final costs, which is exhibit A in your packets. The assessment rule certification, exhibit B. Notice of public hearing, exhibit C, and the form of notice of hearing and statement of costs to be proposed to be assessed is exhibit D. That action item will also establish the public hearing date of, at your council meeting, November 13th, 2018, at 7:00 o'clock, to hear any and all written or oral objections, excuse me, related to the assessments. I'll authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of public hearing, mail the form of notice of hearing and statement of costs proposed to be assessed to all property owners, and then file the document of record and make those records available for public inspection. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of that, or if not, need a motion a second and vote to approve that.
Mr. Kessler?
Now, the, for the water supply line, the city's portion is 21%. Why does the city have a 21% stake in this? How do you get the water to there?
Upsizing the line from the required eight inches to our preferred 12 inches to maintain our size and our distribution.
Other questions? If not, there's several things that are going to need to be in this motion, as he mentioned, and whoever wants to make it, I've got it written down here, just so we make sure we get everything in the motion that he said. I'd be happy to read that, if someone would like us to read this part of it, or let someone have it. Ms. Pardon?
I'll make that motion if you read it. So will I, and I can read it.
The motion needs to approve these documents, which is A, B, C, and D exhibits. Statement of final costs, assessment rules, certification, notice of public hearing, and form of notice, form of notice of hearing and statement of costs proposed to be assessed. We're gonna establish number 13th, 2018, 7:00 PM, for the public kitten hearing, there are oral arguments over, on the respective assessments. Gonna cause the city clerk to publish the notice in the official newspaper and mail the form of the public hearing to all the assessed people and property owners in the assessment area, and then file each of the documents of record in the opposite city clerk.
That's my motion. Second.
Motion second to approve the motion for the Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item B, which is consideration of bids for German waterline replacement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On October 17th, we have the bid letting for waterline replacement, German Avenue. We have included the notice to proceed in the bid tab in your packet. As you can see, we had three bidders, with the lowest being Meese Construction. I want to point out some specific line items, with those being site clearing, restoration, temporary and permanent seating in the water service lines. This project is a directional drill installation, which will require minimal open trenching. Those are some of the variations in the bids that you can see in your packet. The service lines is, I guess, the contractor would just be able to give a better price on that. If you have any questions, I can answer those. Otherwise, I request we move forward with Meese Construction for a total of $171,967.
Mr. Crum, question?
Couple of questions. How did we determine that German needs replaced? Just the amount of repairs we've had to do in the past, and the type of repairs we've had to do. I'm kind of curious, we go around and we are able to grade our streets, because that's easy to do, because we can see that the stuff, do we have any kind of, I mean, when we, I know when we go in and we look at our water lines, sometimes we find, do stuff like that. Do we have some kind of grain to kind of know where we need to watch for? Or do we just go simply off of where we're having to make repairs? Basically, where we have to make repairs, call reports, and also, you know, we do a water loss report that's supplied to KDHE each year. Based on that, you know, they have an acceptable level of water loss. German Avenue, my time in the water department was the most, besides Stewart, which we recently replaced. But German was one where our typical repairs wasn't working, we were actually cutting out a lot of pipe. If there's no other discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the bid from Meese Construction for $171,967.
Second.
Motion second to approve the bid of Meese Construction. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Move to item C, which is consideration of a temporary special event permit application for the consumption of alcoholic alcohol.
All right, this one is for a squadron Christmas party on December 7th of this year at Hayesville Activity Center rental room. I called the applicant, let him know, reminded him that he would have to have an insurance certificate before it would be approved. So I do not have the insurance certificate yet, but you guys can approve it contingent upon receiving it. And until I get that, I won't give him the applicant, I won't give him the permit, which we've done on others.
And this is an Air Force squadron?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
I think motion we approve the temporary special event permit application for the consumption of alcohol, as long as they get the insurance.
Second.
Motion second to approve the temporary special event permit. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item seven, department reports, industry of service as well.
Zach has an announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My announcement is trick or treat on Main Street. There'll be October 31st, Halloween, from 4:30 to 6:30. We have a free concert, Tequila Ridge, they'll be performing in front of 240 North Main, which is the passage salon and boutique. Mayor Armstrong will be handing out hot dogs at the vicar station. We are preparing, we have 1,400 hot dogs. We had, we counted 1,300 just trick or treaters last year, so I over-prepared for candy for the mayor, so he doesn't run out this year, so hopefully. We seem to almost double our numbers every year, so I'm hoping we're getting close to a max out. But we'll see, not to steal any of Chief's thunder, but please drive slowly around 4:30 to 6:30, especially on Main Street, it's, there's a lot of people in a hurry, it seems like, and they don't need to be. So gonna be a lot of kids running around. Thank you.
Item B, city clerk, Janie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Have more information on election. Have early voting at the Hayesville Community Library. That would be October the 30th, and November 1st and 2nd, from noon to 7:00. October 31st, from noon to 5:00, and November 3rd, from 9:00 to 4:00. There are other locations and more voter places, polls. And if anybody has any questions on that, they can actually go to sedgwickcounty.org on their website. They have all the times and locations listed. City offices will be closed on Monday, November the 12th, for Veterans Day. There also will be a Veterans Day service on November the 12th at 11:00 AM at, in front of the PD Court Building. If the weather turns bad, they can move the service inside, in the courtroom. And also, their next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November the 13th. That's all.
Thank you, Janie. Item C, chief?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Our visiting officer this evening is Sergeant Chad Case. He is a supervisor currently assigned to night shift, so as you go by out there, say hi to him. We're also having our annual drug takeback on Saturday, October 27th, which is a Saturday. It'll be from 10:00 to 2:00 in the lobby of the police department right next door. So they're ready to take any kind of prescription over the counter, or pet medications of any kind. They don't accept inhalers, EpiPens, needles and syringes. Everything is incinerated, so you don't have to worry about peeling labels off or any of that kind of stuff. It goes straight into a box and it's taken up by the DEA and destroyed that way. Let's see, I think that was it on that one. But again, it's a Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, so make sure you dig all that stuff out of your drawers. It helps, helps keep those drugs and everything out of people's hands that don't need them and those kind of things. So keeps kids from getting into them, keeps them out of our service system. We don't want them to know our wastewater plant, kind of throws everything off. The last thing I've got is kind of what Zach talked about. We do have several events going on. We have the trick or treat on Main Street, we have a trunk retreat that George will talk about in just a second. Living history rendezvous over at Riggs Park the weekend after. So just be mindful of the activities going on around town. Kind of watch out for pedestrians, mind your speed, and just make sure everybody drives safe, so everybody can have a safe and enjoyable time over the next couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. What about works, Tony?
Just got a few updates for you. The Mill and Overlay projects on Ballard Mimosa and Slate Drive are now complete. Along with the letter in your guys' packet, we had numerous positive feedback for residents. For the PD and the city hall park on the west and north sides, the asphalt has been laid. They were planning to come back Thursday to stripe it. We did open the drive-through, opened this morning. Some of you may have noticed, they leak on the fire hydrant, North Main and Anita. Water department has worked extensively to find the water valves on this 1960s distribution system. I'm happy to say that we were able to find the valves this afternoon to do it. We were tentatively expecting to take, repair that fire hydrant, not repair, replace, replace this 1954 fire hydrant on Wednesday at about midnight. We reached out to McDonald's today, because they will be shut off, and trying to get some feedback from them to make sure that'll work for them. As well as Janie said, Veterans Day, the Public Works Department will be closed. If you have any water or wastewater emergencies, you can contact our on-call staff through Hazel Dispatch at 529-5912. Thank you.
And item E, recreation, Georgie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I have the last of the announcements, because we have so much going on in the city, so bear with me. So this Friday is our last day for our October membership drive. It is also the youth basketball deadline. So if you're looking to get signed up for that, practices will begin in November, games begin in December. Sunday, we have our annual Halloween spectacular event. It will be from 4:00 to 6:00 PM outside the Activity Center. We'll have hay rack rides, games for the kids, different Halloween activities going on there. Immediately following, we're gonna be showing our movie that we canceled earlier, Hocus Pocus. It will start at 6:30, and most likely be in the parking lot there at the Activity Center. We have It's a Girl Thing, which is a hairstyling class for kids, November 5th. And then our annual Gobble Wobble Run will be on Saturday, November 3rd, at 9:00 AM. This is our 8K and 5K run or walk. Chris Cakes will also be serving at the Activity Center from 9:30 to, 9:00 to 11:30 AM. It's $5 per person, and part of those funds go to help fund the Hayesville USD Education Foundation. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Georgie. Item eight, appointments. A, Lynn Morel, 129 Moy Court, regarding the appointment to historic committee for three years. Ms. Ewer?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lynn Morel at 129 Moy Court for the appointment of historic committee for three-year term. Second.
Motion second to approve Lynn Morel's appointment to the historic committee. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Finner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Well, then move to item nine, off agenda, citizens be heard. We do have Warren Card here, we have Kim Bischler, 838 Carla Court. Hayesville wants to discuss homeownership. Kim? We'll get you to go ahead and state your name and address too, for the record, please.
My name is Kim Bischler. I'm from 838 Carla Court. And in front of you, you guys have a rather large packet. I'm not gonna take considerable time going over this. The reason why I'm here today is I am, oh, I guess not in front of you yet. It's on its way. I am a realtor in the area, and one of the things I've noticed is Hayesville is not being selected as a community that homeowners are choosing to go into. On the first page of what you're looking at, I've compared our community to three like-sized communities, Mulvane, Valley Center, Park City, and then Hayesville. If you look half the way down, or three-quarters of the way down, one of the things you'll notice is our income is at $51,660, and I'm getting these numbers from the 2016 census. That is in line with our other communities. Now, if you flip to your happy little tab that I put in there that was sitting at my desk, you'll notice, when I compare these communities, we have similar days on market, similar active listings, so we have 30 active in Hayesville, 22 in Mulvane, 24 in Park City, or in Valley, and 20 in Park City, and our price per unit is relatively similar. Valley Center skews it a little bit, they've got some new construction. One of the most interesting statistics is the 32%. 32% of our properties that are available in Hayesville are non-owner occupied. Bringing that back over to what our dollar value is, the rest of the communities that are similar to ours, their volume is $140,000 to $160,000 per unit, where we're at $105,000. And guys, I pulled these statistics today, they're supporting documentation back through all of this. The reason why I think this is important, if you turn to the next page, you'll see a map in there. This map outlines why people are choosing Park City, Valley Center, and Mulvane. What you're looking at is rural development financing. Through the Farm Bill, all the communities that are outside of the bright yellow qualify for no money down and no mortgage insurance. That's a difference of about $100 a month. People are not choosing Hayesville because they can't afford it. When your median income is $51,000, you're very limited on where you can go. So what I would like to propose is, a few years ago, the council had a program, it was about 10 years ago, it was called the Gold Star Program. It was a $1,000 incentive to anybody that purchased owner occupied during a short period of time. It was a wonderful program, someone from the city came down, actually delivered a check to these folks, and a goodwill package. I can tell you, it made a difference in our business as an industry, and I really believe it'll make a difference in people choosing Hayesville. If you turn back to the second page, not the second page after the tab, but the actual second page, it talks about, this is National Association of Realtors Statistics compiled through the city of, through the state of Kansas. It says that approximately $20,000 is brought into the local economy. $15,000 is brought in from all the folks that have their hair out touring the transaction together, but another $5,000 is brought in through appliances, going to the grocery store, buying a hammer, nails. One of the most interesting statistics that I found was on the second page, the next page after that, at the bottom of this page. Additional home sales induce added home production. Typically, one new home is constructed for every eight existing homes. Therefore, each existing home sold accounts for 1/8 of a new home's value, which is an additional $21,000 brought into the local economy. Hayesville has to compete, and we aren't, and that's why I'm here today.
Is that it?
I could sing. I could dance for Pat.
Thank you.
Any questions at all?
So, the homes you're looking at are, I guess some of them could be newer homes, but the majority of them are gonna be homes that have been built probably in the 50s or 60s?
Great question. If you go right after the map, I actually printed up earlier today, a list of all the active homes, the 30 active homes that are there. And if you take a look, we do have a couple of auction properties, but our median price in here is, our average price is $158. So we aren't talking about new construction, we're talking about the lower end, the people under $170,000, under $180,000. These people are making $50,000 a year, and they're choosing to go to a community where they don't have to come up with down payment. Down payment in Hayesville, minimum is 3%, average is 3.5% to 5%. On a $100,000 house, that's $5,000, guys. That's prohibitive. If you can go to Park City, Valley Center, Mulvane, and come up with no money down, you're gonna choose those communities. Did I answer your?
Yep. We'll take a look at it in two or three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? I don't see anyone else out there, but we'll give them a chance if they wanna speak. Okay, we'll move on then to item 10, execution. We have nothing. Item 11, bills be paid, A, bills be paid the last half of October. Ms. Ewer?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we allow you to pay the last half of October bills.
Second.
Vote second, pay the last half of October bills. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on then to item 12, consent agenda, we have nothing. Item 13, council items, A, council concerns. Counselor, any current concerns you may have?
Ms. Crum?
Well, actually, I would like to thank Ken, 'cause this is pretty extensive, this will be something interesting to look at. I, I would be interested, because these other communities seem to have that advantage over us, it might be something that we could definitely look at. I know we're doing well on new home builds, but I also know, I don't know what the percentage of calls we might get on high weeds and stuff like that, what the percent of those are, that those are rental properties, 'cause I bet it's pretty high, and so if we could get rid of that, actually, it may end up, if we could figure out something, it might actually even pay for itself. And also, did wanna mention something that I did not mention during announcements, 'cause I didn't think of it, the school district in their last meeting did decide to only have a half a day of school on November 6th on Election Day to allow juniors and seniors that are old enough to go vote, and all school staff to be able to go vote, so they elected to take a half-day off, and I think on their website, it's got the release times for the kids on those dates. There's been a lot of talk in different places where people think that Election Day should even just be a holiday where everybody gets off work, and I would like to commend the school board and the superintendent. I was really surprised when my wife came home and told me they'd done that, I had no idea, so just kinda wanted to mention that to make sure people are aware.
Any other concerns, Counselors? Saying that, we'll go then to item B, council asking for questions, updates, 243 North Ward Parkway.
Staff has reached out and talked to the resident, currently, the resident does meet minimum building code requirements. The resident did procure a siding permit on October 12th, the case is considered closed.
Item 14, adjournment?